It's called order the Monday, April 22nd, 2024, meeting of the Eldsville Town Council. Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Who wants to do the prayer? Give me the pledge. John, you want to do the prayer?
Father, we're coming for you tonight to conduct this private, I mean, this public meeting for the business of this town, and we ask that you give us knowledge and your wisdom, Father, in conducting this business, and that it be simple, and everyone be allowed to have their input, and to receive it with that knowledge and wisdom from you in mind. In the name of Jesus, we thank you for that. Amen.
Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Noel, roll call, please.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pam Samples?
Here.
Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, April 9th, 2024.
So moved.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Acts to pay accounts payable vouchers?
So moved.
And payroll, sorry.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are several resolutions this evening. The first resolution is Resolution 11-2024, additional appropriation for rural transit. Who's got this one?
Well, I guess I can do it. So, the resolution is to appropriate money for rural transit for the rest of the year, and I think 4,300 is the number we came up with, so.
That's the amount that the council asks to fund through the rest of the year.
Okay.
Okay. Questions on this resolution or comments? Seeing none. Any public? Seeing none. Back to the council for action.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 0-2024, additional appropriation for rural transit.
Second.
Motion in a second. Take your pick on who the second is. When are you ready for roll call?
Pam Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 12-2024, additional appropriation for telephone and fax.
Yes, so this is for the clerks, telephone and fax, when we signed the contracts for Smithville to upgrade the phones in October. This was an oversight that should have been taken care of last year with an additional appropriation, but this will allow us to pay for the clerk's phone for the remainder of the year.
Okay. Questions from council?
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, is telephone and fax just the line of the budget line, and we're not actually upgrading fax machines?
Correct.
Okay.
And what's the additional appropriation needed?
Is this just for you?
The clerk's office, correct.
It's not the rest of the?
No, I made them separate because they're separate lines, so the planning will be 900. You'll see that resolution, correct, later.
Okay. Other questions from council or comments?
So, was the whole system upgraded to?
Correct.
All the town hall?
Yes. All of the departments, utilities, clerk, and planning.
We lost our support for the whole system, and in fact, if it broke down, we can repair it or replace it.
They were antiquated by several years.
So, and you're asking for additional appropriation for just the clerk office?
There's others at the bottom. I asked if they'd be broken.
Oh, okay.
And the utilities, we don't budget for their lines, so I didn't have to ask for additional appropriations for the utilities.
Okay.
Further council questions or comments? Any from the public? Back to the council.
I move that we approve Resolution 12-2024, additional appropriation for telephone and fax.
Second. Motion second. When you're ready.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next resolution is Resolution 13-2024, additional appropriation for email services.
Yes, so this is actually going to make it more efficient for the clerk's office. It had been this way previously in the budget in years past, and when we created the budget last year, we took it out of the clerk's line and put it in each individual department. The hardship that that creates in the clerk's office is that now, when we have to do that, we have a stack of claims that takes several hours for my accounts payable clerk to put them in and figure out that one individual bill, instead of just having it in one line to pay one check and one claim. So instead of it being in each departmental line, like the street and the planning, it would all be moving it into the clerk's line.
But here, we're appropriating additional funds, not moving.
So, the current funds that are in those lines, instead of doing all the transfers to do it that way, we just included it as an additional appropriation, and that money would go back into the general at the end of the year. So, in the planning line, the email services that were sitting in there would go back into the general at the end of the year.
Okay, why would we not just transfer all those funds to the clerk's office now, as opposed to making an additional appropriation and waiting for it to return back?
I was guided this way when I was talking with the state board of accounts and the DLGF, that this would be the easiest way to do it and the fastest, since we were doing other additional appropriations, but I can absolutely do that.
Okay. Well, another question, and I apologize, this is not your issue. Why was the decision made last year to put them into the?
I was not privy to that information.
Right, and again, I didn't know if you knew it or not, because you weren't.
I did not understand why that was happening.
All right.
And, kind of clarify, the email, I don't understand.
So, when every person in town has an email, and we pay per person, so each department is currently, it's broken down by fire, and then police, and the clerk's office, and the utilities office, and the planning office, so, and that's, and when it comes through the Microsoft bill, they just give us a whole number, like, for example, $450. And then we have to break that down for every department, how many emails. So, if like, for example, the police has 27 standard and 16 basic, that's two separate amounts that we have to keep track of and make a claim for each department, that each department had signs. Instead of it just coming through the Visa bill on one claim, that we can just cut one check and one claim for it.
Yeah, I'm kind of with Scott on this. I, to me, I would rather see the money just transferred over.
Okay.
Instead of doing an additional appropriation for the?
In hindsight, I should have asked council guidance for that. I wasn't sure if that would have been appropriate, so I just went to my DLGF rep and asked how other towns were doing it, so.
With that said, it is a resolution on the agenda, so it will take some type of formal movement, one way or the other, whether it's to table, to kill, or to approve. So, with that said, let us go through the rest of it. Does other council have comments?
I guess I'll just do, when does the bill due?
Um, typical, I couldn't tell you the exact date.
Not the exact date, but just generally, is it coming up soon, or is it?
They do it every, they've been doing it typically, it seems, every two months, where they're billing us, and then they'll pro-rate if we had people come and go throughout the billing cycle.
So, if we don't approve this tonight, and we do the transfer from the other departments?
We could still continue to do it the way we've been doing it. It's just becoming more cumbersome as we add more people to the emails, and while I get the time to do the transfers. So, it would be appropriate if the council decided not to approve that resolution.
Could we not just ask the vendor to break it out by department for?
It's Microsoft, so we already have a hard enough time dealing with them to make sure that they're billing us correctly to begin with, when we've added new employees or taken them from standard to basic. It is a, we fight with Microsoft quite a bit already, as it is.
Well, this is, again, not on you, but I will renew my call to my council members, that we need to seriously evaluate doing something with IT, because we are, we are doing this in an antiquated way, almost like telephone systems, instead of what the current century is. So, again.
Oh, you mean one global kind of IT?
Yes.
Okay.
A package that's maintained by somebody other than who's got five minutes to look at this problem today.
Right. And, we use Microsoft at my business, and I can tell you, it is, I mean, getting a customer service rep for the email service, and this is just to basically host and to provide the email addresses, correct?
Correct.
Then I guess my question would be, why don't you continue to use them if they're not vendor-friendly?
Because they're pretty much one of the only gangs in town. When it comes to?
Microsoft, Google?
Yeah.
There's more. There's more now. I haven't, five years ago, and yeah, you're right, but.
Right, but Google, though, I mean, you can do that, but I think, the thing with Microsoft, are we also getting Office and everything? Is this Microsoft 365? Yeah, so we would lose all that functionality. This is an all-inclusive.
Further council comments? Public comments? Back to council for movement. Where do we want to go with this, guys? Do we want to approve it, disapprove it, table it?
My preference is to go ahead and approve it, because we can always do those transfers later. At least we get this out, so they're not doing multiple.
To be clear, though, if we, if the council so chooses to approve the additional, or the additional resolution, I would not be making the transfers to the clerk's line. We would just be leaving it.
But couldn't you make the transfers to the clerk's line?
We could. It would be overinflated, though, at that point, because I'd be adding the money that's already allocated in each department.
Basic questions, giving her more money, leaving it alone, or zeroing out the departments and putting it all in her line item? It just encumbers that money for the rest of the year for that it's set.
Right. Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, because we wouldn't see it until the end of the year.
Right.
And I feel, just do it as we're doing it now, and then fix this for next year. Budget season coming up, we can get everything aligned, and then everything will be corrected next year.
Okay.
But just continue as we're doing it now, and stay at it.
I don't want to create more work for the clerk's office, so I'd be in favor of you making those moves, and us approving, or voting on the transfers, so that way we can get it all consolidated.
So, is there a motion, one way or another, on what we currently have before us? Please mute everyone on.
Listen to the panel of council.
Everyone should be muted.
Oh, I muted the clerk.
One down.
There we go.
All right. So is there movement from council?
So you want to table it?
Whatever motion council member prefers.
I think we should.
So is that a motion?
I make a motion to table Resolution 13-2024, additional appropriation email services.
And specifically, it will be tabled to the next town council meeting, which is May 13th, 2024, and that way Noel doesn't have to re-advertise.
Right. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion to second. This is a motion to table.
Okay. Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, for clarification, once that's moved, then this would come up for another vote. We would, we would move those from the other funds, and then would we still need to do an additional appropriation for the 10,000?
No, we wouldn't, so we would.
Because if we're tabling it?
Well.
It's going to be up for voting in.
Right.
But we wouldn't need the 10,000, correct?
Correct.
Can't we just table this till the end of the year, Dara? I mean?
Well, if we're gonna do that, we should just vote no.
Yeah, without the voting no, we?
For, to make it cleaner, I would prefer that the council vote no on this particular one, and then I'll re-present it as a transfer later on in the year.
Okay. Since we just tabled it, however, now we need a motion to re-introduce.
I'll make a motion.
Or motion to reconsider.
I'll make a motion to reconsider Resolution 13-2024. Second.
Motion second. When you're ready.
Pamela Samples?
No.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
What are we voting on?
We're voting to put it back on the table.
I thought she wanted us to say no.
No, we're voting to put it back on the table.
You're just, the vote is just to put it back on the table for discussion.
Yes.
All right, then yes, I'll tell you my.
Okay. Now that it's back on the table, is there another motion?
I'll make a resolution, a motion to vote no on Resolution 13-2024, additional appropriation of email services. Second. Well, just to, I make a resolution not to vote, just to?
You make a motion that we approve?
Right, yes.
And then we can vote it.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve 13-2024.
Okay.
Again, I'll second that.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
No.
William Ellis?
No.
Trevor Sager?
No.
Dan Swafford?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. I think we're good there. Resolution 14-2024, additional appropriation for computer services.
Yes, I'm asking the council to approve $2,500 for computer services, so that the clerk's office can replace three of the four computers in our office that were all purchased in 2013, and have had one major upgrade. It was recommended by our IT vendor, that this probably should have been done in the past, but we're at the point where we really need the new computers.
What's the total on this, just so we have everybody knowing?
2,500. 2,500. And that's to include some of the fees to have our IT come in and install, and make sure that our accounting software is correctly in place.
Good. How long ago did we do the upgrade?
It's been several years.
And was that on the whole systems, or just one computer, or?
I know for sure that it was done on the clerks and the, where the deputy, the payroll clerk's computer. The accounts payable clerk's computer is literally falling apart at the base.
If I may, the three computers were purchased new, I think it was 2013. The only upgrades other than software that has been done to them since then was, we've replaced one hard drive and upgraded the RAM, because when they were purchased, they only had eight gig of RAM, which?
Wow.
Was a lot.
Right.
And I think we bumped them up to 32 the last time. But that's the only upgrades that were done.
Now, are we able to use any of that RAM for the current ones, too?
Probably not, because of the technology of the?
Right.
That's old stuff.
Yeah, so it's the older RAM that it's got?
Yes.
Again, I, I mean, I hate to belabor the point, but clerk's office is dealing with finances and with other things. I don't think we want to run 12-year-old computers.
No, from a security standpoint.
From a security standpoint, exactly, so.
I have one other question, too. I know Sandy used to keep a line in there for this in the budget. Is there no line for upgrades, or computers, or?
So, there is some money in CCD. I'm going to incorporate that in with this, because we've gone through a lot of our computer services monies for this year. If you look at some of the accounts payable vouchers, because we've had a lot of issues with the computer and the internet in town hall, and that comes out of the clerk's line, and our IT vendor has been here a lot, doing various installations, and helping us with the transition, changing a lot of the securities, changing the computers, updating laptops.
So, you say you're going to use additional funds, too, besides the 2,500?
Yes, because?
Do you know how much, or how much is in that fund?
$2,000.
So, you're talking like 4,500 total, then?
Yes.
And that's going to take care of everything?
Yes, barring the fact that we don't continue to have internet and other IT issues for the computer installations and getting us up and running in that aspect, it absolutely We've had a lot of unfortunate, unforeseen things that have come up with, where we've had to call our IT person out to help us fix it.
Be glad to hear the detail. At some point, we need to understand why we've had IT people in here.
Prefer we, for security reasons, not discuss that in open meetings.
Correct.
Yes.
With the IT person, does he do the IT for all the departments in town?
As I understand it, no. I only call him for the clerk's department, so I know that planning and utilities.
We use him for everything in the town hall, and we also use him in utilities.
And the street.
And street, thank you.
But police and fire does not use? Is there, just curious, the reason that?
I take care of 90% of ours ourselves, and then the stuff that's above my level, one of our volunteers works full-time at U.S., and does it at no charge.
And with the Smithville issues with the internet, is that an equipment problem on our end?
No.
Then why are we paying for it?
Be glad to talk about it, how, what would be appropriate and protect the innocent.
Okay.
So, do you have an estimate, maybe, how much we're spending on IT a year, or how much we spent to date for all the departments? I mean, I'm not asking for a number right now, obviously, but?
No, but I can, so you, you would like to know for the IT for town hall, because what would you do, all departments? You want all departments?
I would like to have all the departments, except for, I guess, fire, that they're doing it themselves, so there wouldn't be?
Police does it to themselves, correct?
Themselves.
So, Zach, does he do it for you guys?
I mean, for years, I've talked about that, maybe we need to hire a part-time IT person, and this would kind of maybe, see if that's warranted yet, because I know when I mentioned it, we were just kind of, everyone was doing their own thing, and it would cost us more money back then, but maybe we're at a point now where this position could be beneficial to the town, so.
I would say, it might not be a good idea, with all due respect, hiring somebody with the technical know-how to navigate the cyber world these days. Getting somebody part-time, you probably couldn't pay them enough, and if you, and you can't probably keep them very long, and outsourcing that seems to be the way to go. I mean, it's up for a discussion, and I'd be glad to do whatever the town board wants to do, but with all the cybersecurity that's necessary to protect us, I just, a part-time person just probably would not serve our needs.
Well, I mean, obviously, I don't know the numbers, so I can't really speculate either way right now, so, I mean, once you get the numbers together, then we can look at it and decide, maybe we need a full-time person. I don't know. I mean, as far as security and stuff, I mean, we're just as vulnerable outsourcing it as we would be hiring our own person, so.
Well, I could probably argue that, but I do agree with, maybe we would want to hire an IT person in the future. It's a great segue into the work session, so.
So get those numbers together, and just let us look at it.
So, we are back to the AU resolution, which is 14-2024, additional appropriation for computer services. Is there further council comment? Any comment from the public? But please.
Valerie Moore.
You're on.
Valerie Moore. Just a comment to what you were saying. Towns the size of Eldsville, Spencer, whatever, frequently hire on a retainer a service. We keep a service in our office on a retainer that comes within 30 minutes if I have a problem, and I know they also work for the town of Spencer, so you might want to look into that. I've found them to be very dependable.
We actually have that set up, too, with utilities. We have the computer guy that works for, with our, we have a skating system that's tall, you know, we have to be protected. Some of the water systems and wastewater systems have been attacked recently, and he keeps us up to speed. And I think, once we give you that number, you'll be amazed. It's not, just for that service, and not, it's not the computers themselves, we're talking about the service, and it's not that expensive. I don't think you can see a line item that says, why would we hire someone?
And if I may also, with the street side of the DPW, what I can't do myself as well, I look to Kevin, and what Kevin can't do, then I go to the same IT person that the utilities is using, so it's very minimal for the street as well.
And to be clear, it's a company. It's not just one person.
Okay. So, seeing no further public comment, we're back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 14-2024, additional appropriation for computer services.
Second.
Motion second.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
If I could interrupt, can we go back to Resolution 13-2024?
Yes.
If I followed what happened, there was a motion to approve, and it was three to two against, so the motion did not pass. So now, there needs to be a motion on, for final action, which is either a motion to reject it, or a motion to table it again.
I'm sorry, I don't follow.
It was three to two against. So, just like with, that's not a final action. You have to have three people voting to do something, so either to reject, approve, or table, right? It was three to two not to pass.
I thought it was unanimous.
Yeah, I thought it was unanimous that we defeated it after we reintroduced it, because there was a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
And then when that came up, all five of us voted.
Okay, then I'm sorry. I heard, I heard something else, but okay, thank you.
If we need to do something, we can.
No, it's okay. If it really was five to zero, that's fine. Does that track with what you recorded?
So, the way that I read it is, initially was to table, and then reintroduce, and then motion to approve, and then everyone voted no.
Okay, I'm?
To approve it as no, so?
The final action was a motion to approve, which was defeated by 0-5.
Okay, then you need to turn around and do another motion.
Okay.
So, either to reject it, or to table it.
I got it, Scott.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm a little off.
That's okay.
I'll make a motion to reject Resolution 13-2024, additional appropriation for email services.
Second.
Pamela Samples?
No.
Scott Oldham?
Stand by for some clarity.
Reject, yeah.
So on this one, the motion on the table is to reject this appropriation, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
So a yes vote would mean reject it?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so do you want to repeat that, Pam? Do you, what's your vote?
Yes.
Okay, now go on with your roll call.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion rejected.
Okay.
Thank you. Just so the record's clear.
Sure, no. It was very confusing.
Confusing.
So now we're down to, I believe, Resolution 15-2024, additional appropriation for fleet insurance.
Yes, so, if the council remembers, earlier in the year, we actually did a transfer from the fire and police salaries to cover the beginning-of-the-year bill for fleet and property and liability insurance. Again, last year, at the end of the year, we had a meeting with our insurance rep, who had notified us that our insurance would be increasing 16%, and it wasn't, an additional appropriation wasn't done at the end of last year, so now that line is currently at zero, and that creates a problem for any future fleet that will be purchased. Or, we had a police vehicle that was totaled, that we had to take off the insurance while it was being repaired, and then put it back on the insurance, and the way that the insurance company gives us refunds is through a check, and sometimes the checks take longer to get to us, and so then when I had to add it back to the insurance after it had been repaired, there's no money in the line. So this is $5,000 to have some funds, and if you'll see on the agenda, DPW is looking to? to purchase another vehicle, and I won't have any money to pay for insuring it.
I'm a little confused why we had to take a vehicle off insurance that we still owned and then put it back on.
Well, we, we kept it on liability, but we have, if, when it was totaled out while it was being repaired, we could not have collision insurance on it.
So the vehicle was totaled?
Correct.
But we retained it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, we'll move forward with this. Questions from counsel about fleet insurance?
Did the money we got from totaling it, did it go back into the fleet insurance line, or where did it go back into the, where did that money go?
So it went into the fleet insurance line and then went right back out to pay for the repairs of the truck or the vehicle.
Right, but there should be some left over if we're doing it that way.
No, there wasn't enough to cover. The amount that the insurance gave us for totaling out the vehicle did not cover all of the expenses to fix it. It was about a $750 deficit.
Okay.
I guess I still can't get past it was totaled, then we fixed it?
Well, here's the deal, because we've come across this problem a couple of times, because all the add-on equipment to the vehicle, when that equipment is destroyed, they add it to the vehicle total, which sometimes pushes it over the 80% mark, and for instance, like a push bumper, sometimes it's $3,000 or $4,000 if it's destroyed, that really ups the, I guess, the value against keeping the vehicle, but the vehicle itself is not really that damaged, it's just the combination of the destruction of the push bumper and what the car's worth. So theoretically, you could have a push bumper destroyed, had a $4,000 one, and the vehicle would be worth $6,500, they're going to total that because it's the ratio, but the car itself is not totaled, it's just the push bumper. But once it's a fixed vehicle, the insurance companies are now looking at it as the entire vehicle and its equipment, so if the equipment is destroyed, they consider that part of the vehicle. Does that make sense? So it's not like a frame or anything else that's now.
Yeah, and that's where I was confused.
It's becoming, to be honest with you.
All I'm just making sure is we don't have a dangerous vehicle out there that.
Yeah.
No, the insurance obviously wouldn't have agreed to put it back at full coverage on the insurance if that were the case.
Right.
Do we have a salvage title?
Yeah, that's what I was getting asked.
Or is it, no?
Back to service.
Right, but I know the title though, since it's totaled out, a lot of times it'll rebuilt or how?
This has been very difficult to, because the insurance companies have always been going to change how they're doing things, so every municipality is facing this. In some cases, you have good vehicles literally being given to them because of the equipment destruction on the exterior. I can't speak to the title, but I know B&amp;B is aware of the issue, aware of the problem, and I don't know how it actually comes back to us.
Excuse me, normally you have to get a new title if it's stolen. Just went through it myself.
I don't know how they handle it.
I'm waiting on the insurance to come back to me to tell me how to proceed for the title. I've not heard one way or the other what I need to be done for next steps.
Okay. So we're back to counsel questions.
We kind of got off the.
Seeing none, is there public questions or comments? Back to the council for action.
I move approval of Resolution 15-2024 additional appropriation for fleet insurance.
I'll second. You got it.
Motion in a second.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Final resolution for this evening is Resolution 16-2024 additional appropriation for telephone and fax.
And this is for the planning office to carry them throughout the rest of the year for the upgrades for Smithville.
Okay, counsel questions? Public comment? Back to the council.
I move approval of Resolution 16-2024 additional appropriations for telephone and fax for the planning department.
Second.
Motion second.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no ordinances on first reading, no ordinances on second reading, there is over two items under new business, the first of which is DPW, a Labor One vacancy.
That'll be me. I'd like permission to hire a new Labor One for Department of Public Works position. This is a position I've been talking about for a few months, and this is a final additional crew member that we need to finish our work this year. It's, it's budgeted in all three budgets that'll pay for this, it'll be split a third, third, a third between utilities, water, utilities, sewer, and street department. They will make a starting pay of $30.14. The gentleman's name is Joe Stevens, he has a CDL, experience in utilities, line locating, boring, I mean, he's just a general, his background is just what we need to augment the experience we have now and to help us do all the capital projects that we've already begun and will be doing in the next year and a half, two years.
Okay, counsel questions or comments? Is there a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the hire of Joe Stevens for DPW Labor One vacancy.
I'll second.
Motion is second.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is the purchase of a new DPW vehicle.
Yeah, we'd like to table this until the next meeting. We're having a hard time putting together a number, people keep telling us they'll sell us this or this, and then somebody else buys it before we can get to it, so we're trying to nail down a number so I can give you a number before you approve it.
What type of vehicle are you guys looking?
We're looking at a crew cab Silverado four-wheel drive. We have additional duties that we've taken on. It'll be a pool truck that will be used a lot by the stormwater MS4 operator, and the only pool truck we really have extra right now, most of our vehicles are out on the road every day, is a 1904, what is it?
It's a 2008 Ford Ranger, straight shift, pretty plain, clutch is about wore out on it, so it's a 2008 model.
Yeah, I always wear a hat if I'm driving it, it's kind of embarrassing, so. Anyway, we're trying to get rid of that truck, and we're going to trade it in.
Okay. Counsel, questions?
I'll move to table the purchase of a new DPW vehicle.
Second.
Motion is second. Whenever you're ready.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Motion tabled.
There is no old business, there is no report from Ellisville, seeing none. Now we're moved to privilege of the floor, anyone having business for the council not part of our normal agenda. Seeing none, supervisor comments?
I'll quickly say we have an envisioned work session tomorrow at 3:00, probably be the final one for a while, and it's our character standards work session, trying to decide how we're going to populate the town with signage and benches and, and street fronts and all that, so it ought to be an interesting meeting. The other thing I would say is we started the Stars Road 12-inch waterline project, they've laid 2,400 feet in six days, I'm not saying it's world's record, but it's pretty amazing how well they've done, so we're on it. So the other thing I would say is we started the trail, the next level trail finally, and so you'll see some improvements, and you'll actually see some black on the trail, I don't know, in the next month or so, so, so anyway, that's all I have.
Hi, this is Tor, the UBS system you guys approved to purchase last year for the 2008 unit, 8,500, hasn't been installed, it's been online April 1st, it's working wonderfully, people from Trojan are amazed, they're still using some of the new purchases from 1995, but the duty is well appreciated, especially by the operators, and so it's all good.
If you recall, two council meetings ago, the council awarded Captain Matt Seabot an award through the town of Ellisville, and the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department presented his name to the state of Indiana through the Department of Homeland Security, and they will be here this Thursday, the 25th, to present Matt a valor award from the state of Indiana at 2:00 at the fire station if anybody would like to attend. Thank you, congratulations to him.
I have nothing.
I don't have anything.
I just wanted to state for the minutes, on the additional appropriation, we had advertised it for $64,100, and just for clarification, the amount that will, that the council approved was $54,100, just for the minutes, so that when I do the appropriation, that that matches.
Okay. Counsel comments?
Want to say our feedback from people on Vine Street and some of the businesses there, with that heavy rain we've had constantly last week, they said this is the driest it's been for them since they can recall.
Yeah, if I did a flood report, I would say that we had excessive rains, and the water stayed within the banks of the new project. I hesitate to say that we fixed it, but we sure.
I'm not jinxing that and saying that either.
Yeah, okay, so, but we have mitigated what the effects have on, especially Vine Street, the water sheets off of it, so we had no pooling, and I have had a lot of comments on how well it's done. I would like to comment on the fact that the whole time that I pushed that we did this project, I was also interested in the aesthetics that it's provided the town, that we take, we've taken a blighted area and made an improvement to green it and make it something that, you know, is easy on the eyes when you're going through town.
Other counsel comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to adjourn this portion of the meeting, we had advertised this special work session, which will begin five minutes after we end this, because we're going to get a five-minute break, and then we'll explain how that works when we get back. So at this point in time.
Scott, I do have one, sorry, I did fail to mention something, probably the most important thing, that the officer that Captain Seabot did take care of that afternoon will be present Thursday. He is out of the hospital and will be attending.
Awesome.
So, thanks for that.
For this point, this meeting is adjourned.